All right, good evening. Now I'd like to bring the regular evening meeting of the Township of Langley Council to order, and our first item is the adoption and receipt of the agenda items. I'll just note that D1 has been removed, so without a call for motion. Council Davis, second by Council Kuntz, show of hands, all those in favor, opposed, carried, thank you. Next item is the adoption of minutes, the regular evening council meeting of February 24th and the public hearing meeting of February 24th. Could I have a motion, please? Council Arneson, second by Council Whitmarsh, any errors or omissions? Council Richter.
Yes, page 14, there's no seconder on the motion.
Oh, okay.
It's moved by me but not seconded, so I'm just wondering if there was a seconder.
I believe there was a seconder, it didn't get recorded, is that correct? So the clerk will correct that, thank you for that. Okay, with that I'll call a question, all those in favor, opposed, carried, thank you. All right, let's move on to presentations. Very happy to say that we have Muscular Dystrophy Canada here and some of our firefighters in attendance to present a check, we always like those. So I'm going to ask Kirsty Rousell, Muscular Dystrophy and representative from the Charitable Society, I have to come forward. Thank you. Put your mic on.
I assume I'm standing in the right spot?
You are.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Oh yes, the mic picks up really well.
Okay, good, perfect. Okay, so, good evening, Mayor Froze and council members, thank you so much for having us here tonight. As you mentioned, my name is Kirsty Rousell and I am the Acting Manager of Firefighter Relations for Muscular Dystrophy Canada, B.C. and Yukon Region. Along with our firefighters here today, joining me as well is MDC client Stephen Brodusco, he's over to my right, on your left here, his parents Dawn and Kathy, as well as his sister Angela, and we'll hear from Dawn partway through my little spiel here. So to start, I would just like to provide a brief introduction to neuromuscular disorders. Neuromuscular disorders are a group of diseases that weaken the body's muscles. The causes, symptoms, age of onset, severity and progression vary depending on the individual and the exact diagnosis. While some types of neuromuscular disorders are first evident in infancy or early childhood, other types may not appear until later in life. The severity of symptoms, the age at which the symptoms appear, how fast the symptoms progress, and what pattern of inheritance the disorder follows are all factors that differ among the various forms of muscular dystrophy. Neuromuscular disorders don't discriminate. All they really care about is robbing your muscles of strength, making it hard to run, play, communicate, and remain independent. They may progress quickly or very slowly. For some individuals, the disorder is fatal, and currently there is no cure. Muscular Dystrophy Canada supports individuals and their families impacted by muscular dystrophy and related muscle diseases. These rare conditions, of which there are approximately 160, are referred to collectively as neuromuscular disorders. This past September marked the 65th year of partnership between firefighters and Muscular Dystrophy Canada. During this time, firefighters have been MDC's most important fundraising partners in the B.C. and Yukon Region, and in this region firefighters raise close to 65% of our overall revenue. I am so grateful to be here today to share with you the amazing work of your Township of Langley firefighters. Since 1995, the Township of Langley Firefighters Charitable Society has raised $415,000 in support of those impacted by neuromuscular disorders. This past September, during their boot drive, the Township of Langley Firefighters Charitable Society added to this total by raising an incredible $44,000, bringing their total lifetime giving to $450,000. I would like to express my thanks on behalf of Muscular Dystrophy Canada to each and every member who volunteered their time over the three-day boot drive weekend. In particular, I would like to thank firefighter Scott Brewer for his enthusiasm, dedication, and leadership in organizing this event on behalf of Township of Langley Firefighters Charitable Society. Wanting to wave, Scott? Yay, Scott! I was going to, I was understanding, they told me there were going to be eight firefighters here, so I'm going to skip on doing the introductions, but we do have representation here from each of the halls. So, there they are, over there. So now while it is not a competition, I want everyone to know their efforts are much, very much appreciated. I would like to recognize, in particular, the paid call members from Hall Four for their outstanding work in raising the most over the three days, a total of $14,343. To all Township of Langley firefighters, without your tireless support and dedication, Muscular Dystrophy Canada would not be able to have the impact that it does. This partnership between firefighters and Muscular Dystrophy Canada, as well as the ongoing support of B.C. and Yukon communities, like the Township of Langley, has allowed MDC to improve the quality of life for thousands of Canadians impacted by neuromuscular disorders. From financial assistance to emotional support, from advocacy to education, Muscular Dystrophy Canada is on the ground supporting Canadians. Muscular Dystrophy Canada-funded research has led to advancements in treatments and has helped Canadians with neuromuscular disorders live longer and more empowered lives. And I would like to, at this time, invite Dawn to step up to the podium, he would like to say a few words on behalf of his family.
I'm not quite as, excuse me, formally prepared, so I'm just going to be speaking from the heart. I recall the day that Stephen was diagnosed and your life just turns around, and you have no idea what lays ahead of you, the challenges that you're going to face, the many doctor's appointments, specialist appointments, the challenges in fundraising, the impact it has on your life. What you people do make a difference. I know we don't have pennies anymore in our currency, but I gave a speech once to a bunch of young children, and every penny makes a difference. There's a lot of good days, there's okay days, there's a lot of challenging and tough days, and you just make that a little easier to deal with. And for that, I know it's my family here today, but I can speak on behalf of all those families that are affected by neuromuscular disorders, that you make a difference in our lives, and we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you for your time.
Okay, so in closing, on behalf of Muscular Dystrophy Canada and our clients, we would like to express our deepest gratitude to not only the Township of Langley Firefighters Charitable Society, but to the local businesses who allow firefighters to shake their boot on their property, and to the Township of Langley residents who took the time to stop by, visit, support our firefighters, and make a donation to Muscular Dystrophy Canada. With the support of the Township of Langley Firefighters Charitable Society, Muscular Dystrophy Canada is able to provide education, information, support, advocacy, and funding for research and assistive devices. With your help, those impacted by neuromuscular disorders can live life on their own terms, and for this, we thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, my name's Nick Short, I am a director with the Township of Langley Firefighters Charities. I'd like to thank mayor and council for allowing us to do another presentation here tonight. I'd like to thank Muscular Dystrophy for coming out, it's been a great partnership between us, and we want to see that going for quite a few more years. Township of Langley Charitable Society is a partnership between Local 4550 and then all of our paid call members here. This event has been going on for a long time, and our paid call members put in an incredible amount of work for this. This year alone, we estimate there's over 1,000 man-hours put into this event over the three days, and the numbers, I think, speak for themselves, so I just want to say thank you very much, guys, for all your hard work, it's really appreciated, and your passion, your commitment to the community shows. On a personal note, I've been in Langley for four years, and in the time that I've been here, I'm just continuously blown away by the support of the citizens and the businesses and our local politicians and representatives, so I just want to say thank you very much for working with us and allowing us to do these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I know we'll do a photo op, but I just want to say on behalf of council, thank you very much for the work that you do. I do appreciate when you're out there with that boot, I did go out to put some money into the boot, and as I was putting in, they got a call and they're wrapping it up and throwing stuff in the truck and out of there. I don't know if it's because the mayor showed up, or they actually got a call, but I really do appreciate the fact that you're out there raising money for our community and for such a worthy cause as muscular dystrophy, and a very impassioned talk by Dad, I can't imagine what that's like, but you're going through it, but you have such great support of people behind you, and we all do support you. So again, thank you very much on behalf of all of council and all the residents of the Township of Langley. So now we'll take a picture.
Can you use me as a tripod?
Just stand on your shoulders so I get a different shot.
Yeah, like a totem pole.
Yeah.
We could just make up different names for the tripod. We might want to move back to get everybody in.
I think we're going to have to, you brought a lot of firefighters.
Okay, can you form a couple of rows and get in as close together as you can, so we can get everybody in?
Maybe the people with the plaques out front, sort of thing, there we go.
this, but once we're done the second presentation, if you wish to leave, please do so. So now we have a Community Heritage Register Plaque Program presentation, and I'd just like to just provide a few words on behalf of council. So we have some images to accompany our next presentation, and so I'll ask you, please enjoy the PowerPoint on the screen, and I always enjoy this heritage stuff, I love looking at what life was. Tonight, we have some very special guests with us that we would like to recognize for the heritage preservation efforts. In the Township of Langley, we value our history, and it's important that we honor and preserve our past. To this end, the Township maintains a Community Heritage Register, an official listing of historic properties that have been firmly identified as having heritage value or character. Ten years ago, a Community Heritage Register Plaque Program was established to acknowledge the people and groups who own the sites on the Heritage Register and are taking steps to preserve, restore, and adapt them for continued use. The recipients are chosen by the Township's Heritage Advisory Committee, and tonight plaques are being presented to Clave and Kim Storty, owners of Payne Porter Residence in Murrayville, which was built in 1912, and Rob and Tammy Simpson for the Flowerdu Residence in rural Langley, which was constructed in 1910. Both homes are valued for their association with three early community builders who contributed to the development of Langley in the areas of governance, defense, the law, business, agriculture, education, health, and recreation during the first half of the 20th century. We would like to thank the Stortys and the Simpsons for the commitment to preserving these unique places, which help tell the story of our past and continue to serve our community today. So at this point, I would like to present the plaques to Clave and Kim and Rob and Tammy, if they could please come forward. would just want to say a few words.
Well, I just wanted to offer my congratulations on behalf of the committee, as the mayor's mentioned, Counsel Kuntz and I are co-chairs, and there are other members of the committee that are here, so it's a very proud moment for us. We try and do this around Heritage Week, now Heritage Week has just kind of passed, it's in February, so it's usually around Valentine's Day, which makes it tough to do it right on that time, but it's a time to acknowledge your work and what you've contributed to the heritage of the township, but it's also a call-out to others amongst the township and town residents that might qualify. So the Heritage Plaque Program has been around about 10 years, but we also have a grant program that's been around a little longer than that, and you're eligible up to $10,000 if you're doing restoration work to a home that's on the register. So we just encourage anybody out there that wants to get involved with that program, please do apply. The deadline is March 20th, and once again, congratulations on behalf of the committee to you both for your work, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, so now we'll move on to the rest of our meeting, if you did want to leave, we'll take a moment, I know you did ask, so I'll take a moment so that if you want to leave, but you're welcome to stay, it gets more exciting.
There's the mayor's report.
The mayor's report, I should have read the mayor's report. Are you going to be?
You had a captive audience.
You going to declare?
Yeah, I just want to mention to you, I think I forgot to mention it to you.
Okay, Counsel Woodward.
Yes, just Ms. Bauer, I just want to declare a conflict for E1 and F1. So E1 is obvious, but for F1, being a property owner within the Fort Langley boundary as proposed by the bylaw, I'll be declaring a conflict, just to be on the safe side, thanks.
Fair enough. All right. Okay, so now we'll move on to reports to council, E1 is Heritage Alteration Permit Application Number 101082, State Wood Properties Limited, a bunch of addresses there, and this motion, as it stands, who moved as one, it is quite a bit there in a motion, but if I could have a mover, please? Counsel Whitmarsh, second by Counsel Kuntz, I have to clear the queue, sorry Counsel Richter, if you could just push a button again, thank you. Counsel Richter.
Yeah, I was just wondering, isn't this now a little bit redundant? And should we even be voting on it, or just deferring it?
Well, we haven't received any information to the contrary, this is on the, it is appropriate to have this on the agenda. I'm going to ask Mr. Seffy, perhaps if you don't mind, to maybe give us a bit of a background as to why, this has been here before, and how it arrived back on the agenda again. Mr. Seffy.
Thank you, your worship. The application that is in front of council has not been withdrawn, so it is quite appropriate for council to deal with it. It's a Heritage Alteration Permit Application. The reason for that is because the applicant had made an application to demolish certain buildings that are located on the slide, as you can see, on both sides of Glover Road, east side and west side, within the heritage conservation area of Fort Langley. Because of the location of the buildings within the heritage conservation area, there is a requirement for a Heritage Alteration Permit, which the applicant has applied for, which is required for council to authorize issuance of. When council dealt with this application some time ago, council, in essence, did two things, I guess, one was to require staff in collaboration with the applicant to undertake a heritage assessment, and then the other thing that council asked for was to be able to view and review a proposed concept for the development of the sites, once the buildings have been demolished. So the application that is in front of council is further to that referral by council to staff, and it does, I guess, several things. One is split, if you will, or divide, request division of the Heritage Alteration Permit into two separate permits. The reason for that is because staff is taking the direction of council previously provided to be applicable to both sides of Glover Road, both cluster, if you will, of buildings. A development application had been submitted for the area on the east side of Glover Road, the buildings on the east side, but not for the west side. So the permit, with council's permission and endorsement, is to be divided into two, one to deal with the east side, the other one to deal with the west side. As council is aware, the other referral to staff, the other matter that council disposed of previously has been dealt with in the afternoon by staff providing council with the heritage assessment of the buildings, on both sides, east and west, with a consultant that is qualified to provide such assessments, identifying no heritage integrity for the reference buildings. As such, this matter that's in front of council this evening is to deal with the Heritage Alteration Permit, which then enables the issuance of a demolition permit, subject to a demolition permit being applied for. A development application, as I said, has been applied for but withdrawn for the buildings to the east side of Glover, and the staff recommendation is that a similar condition be imposed for the issuance of Heritage Alteration Permit for the buildings on the west side of Glover.
I have two additional questions, if it's okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, given the future transfer of these properties, is there a legal obligation on our part to consult with the future owners? So this is question number one. And question number two, if these are issued today, are they obligated to be put into effect immediately, or can the use of the demolition permits be held until the future owners wish to use them if they do so?
Well, I think on the first point, we really can't anticipate who the future owners will be based on what we've seen today. We can only look at the application as it stands in front of us and the current ownership of it, projecting into the future is difficult to do. As far as the particular owner who has this, the question would be, is there a timeframe that they have to carry out the Heritage Alteration Permit requirements, or is there a deadline, or is there something that's left up to the proponent, Mr. Seffy?
Thank you, your worship. Typically, the permits that are issued or authorized for issuance by council are valid for two years, a period of two years. I would suggest that this would be the same.
And if this property was to be transferred to anyone, anybody else, do the Heritage Alteration Permits transfer with it, or would a new owner have to reapply?
Your worship, a permit is not issued to, I guess, to a specific owner, it's in relation with the land and the properties affected by the application, so it would be valid regardless of ownership.
And, but there's no requirement for the proponent to actually, once this is approved, to actually carry through the Heritage Alteration Permit to the demolition permit?
There's no obligation.
Okay, thank you. Does that help, Counsel Richter? Okay, thank you.
That sure does, thank you.
Okay, I see no further discussion, so I'll call the question on E1. And it carries, Counsel Long and Counsel Davis opposed. And move on to F1, and this is bylaws for, or sorry, bylaws for first and second reading, we start with F1, cannabis retail sales, bylaw 5574, 5575, 5576, 5579. No, he's declared a conflict on this one also because of a property that he owns within the area. So, motion, have a motion, Counsel Arneson, seconder, Counsel Kuntz, discussion. Before I entertain any discussion, I want to thank staff for the work that they've done on this. Certainly, this was a topic for all of us during our campaigns, the public have been quite interested in this, and it's been a topic since that time. I also want to thank the patience of the public, because one thing that I set out to do, and council set out to do in the beginning of this term, was to ensure that we heard from our residents and that we made a made-in-Langley bylaw for cannabis retail sales. The report, I felt, was very thorough, it reflected what the public wanted, and certainly gave us very good direction on which way to go, and staff have taken that direction and incorporated into these bylaws. So I want to thank staff for the work that they've done, and I want to thank the public for their patience, but I feel it was worth the wait to get something that's made in Langley, and that we know that we had input from the residents of Langley. So with that, I'll open it up, Counsel Long.
Thanks, your worship. Yeah, the recommendations are before us, and it makes sense. I guess there's a couple of questions, and people have asked me, and there's been a lot of talk about the revenues that the township would get, or who's going to get revenues out of these stores. Now, my understanding from the report is there is no revenue sharing for the township, I just want to like to have some comment from staff, your worship, on that, other than the licensing fee, is that correct?
That's correct, the province would be the one that would have jurisdictional revenue sharing, so Mr. Seffy, is there anything you can add to that?
That's it, your worship.
Okay. Okay, so the licensing fee, which is fairly substantial, is that an annual fee of the $5,000, yeah?
Yes, yes it is.
Okay, and then, so I guess we should find out where the province is, because they were promising all kinds of things, and as you said, your worship, it is with the province, but I think we should be following up with them and see what's what with the sharing of profits, if there are any, I guess, sales are down apparently, but, so anyway, I'd like to make sure that that's addressed at some point, and I'm sure it will be, but let's keep our pulse on the province and keep their feet to the fire, thank you.
It'll be the taxation sharing, revenue taxation, revenue sharing, okay, thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yes, thank you, and thanks to staff for the report, it's very thorough. I had a question similar, I guess, just what Counsel Long asked, and then another question. On the issue of government versus private stores, so when we talk about government stores, these are provincially operated government stores, there's not the option for it to be a municipally operated government store? Is that correct, through your worship?
Yeah, Mr. Seffy, or Mr. Becken, Seffy?
Your worship, a municipally owned store has not been contemplated, although it is possible, subject to council's direction, and the policy and the bylaw would apply to both government-owned as well as private facilities, so there's no distinction between them.
I think a municipally owned facility of such facility was, they would fall under the privately owned, not under, government is referred to provincial government, under the B.C. or cannabis act.
That's correct, your worship, yeah. Okay, so there could be, and I'm not suggesting we go there, I'm just asking the question, there is the, there could be the possibility of having a municipally owned store in order that we would gain revenue from it, is that a possibility?
That's always possible, if you want to go into the business.
Always possible, okay. Thank you. The other question I had was, I'm just wondering on the thinking around having one store in each of the different locations for a total of eight, as opposed to just maybe suggesting that there could be eight stores, and wherever they open, they open.
Mr. Seffy, I know in the report, I think there was some of the comments from the public, because they wanted to see them in different communities, but Mr. Seffy, can you elaborate?
Yes, thank you, your worship. The response from the public certainly went into the staff recommendation, as well as the fact that it is staff's opinion, professional opinion, that such retail operations are likely best suited in commercial centers. And as you will see on the screen, we have eight, well, actually seven neighborhoods, communities, if you will, with commercial centers, as well as the area around the interchange, so that was the thinking, to accommodate the facilities within commercial centers.
Okay, and so the application process would be sort of first come, first served in each of those commercial centers, is that sort of the strategy?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Subject to council's resoning acceptance... Subject to council's resoning, acceptance of a resoning process, obviously.
Right, okay, thank you.
Because each one has to have its own, like, because the spot's own, so we do have some oversight on the location. All right, I see no further discussion, so I'm gonna call the question on F1. And it carries unanimously. All right, we can ask Councillor Woodward to come back. Thank you. Okay, so now we'll move on to F2. This is the Willbrook Land Value Capture System, bylaw number 5582, for first and second. Can I have a motion, please? Councillor Arneson, the seconder, second. Councillor Whitmarsh, discussion on F2. To go to public hearing, Councillor Richter.
Yeah, so with F2, I had a question about choosing 2020 as the base year for the land value capture system, since there are diagrams that have been, or discussions that have taken place in the public about the location of the transit stops moving forward. So I'm wondering, is it possible for us to set the date back to when the first discussions or diagrams came into play?
Mr. Seffy?
Yes, it is, Your Worship. That's possible.
And what year was that?
Have to check our records, I think, a couple of years, Mr. Chu? Three years, so 2017.
Okay, I'd like to make an amendment, then, that this bylaw be changed to set 2017 as the base year.
Okay, I'm just gonna, I've got one more speaker, and then I'll, I'll take, take that. Councillor Woodward?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I was gonna suggest potentially 2018, since that was the baseline year mentioned in the actual report, is one of the possible starting points for that. So maybe one or two years doesn't make the difference. So if the potential mover of that would want to compromise on 2018, maybe we could gain wider support for that, based on its commentary in the staff report.
Councillor Richter, you're on.
And so what's the difference between 2017? Like, why, why wouldn't you take three years ago?
It was, apparently it's mentioned in the staff report. So, Councillor Richter, I've got you on, if you wish to make an amendment.
Okay, I will amend, then, that we revise the base year to 2018.
Okay, it's moved in second by Councillor Woodward. Open amendment. Any discussion on moving it to 2018? All right, I'm gonna call the question on the amendment. And it carries unanimously. And on the main motion as amended, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question on F2. Okay, that carries unanimously. And this does go to public hearing, so we certainly have an opportunity, if we hear from the public otherwise, to make changes. Now we go to G, bylaws first, second, and third reading. And this G1 is a cannabis production farm bylaw, number 5577. Can I have a motion, please? Councillor Coonst, the seconder. Councillor Arneson, discussion on G1. Seeing none, I'll call the question. Carries unanimously. Move on to G2, bylaws for an inter-municipal ride hailing business license. Bylaw 5580 and 5581. Can I have a motion, please? Councillor Richter, second by Councillor Coonst. Again, I want to thank staff for the work they've done. The mayor's council, TransLink, had directed staff at TransLink to work with the municipalities across three regional districts, and, which they did. We gave them a real tight deadline, January 31st, to come back with some recommendations, which they did. And I really want to applaud all the municipal staff who worked tirelessly to bring this to councils in such a quick time. And this allows the ride hailing services to operate across the Zone 1, which incorporates three regional districts, with only having to go get one business license. And it is an opt-in program for municipalities. Not every municipality has to do it, and several have opted not to go into it, but it certainly allows for some consistency across the region. So again, I'd like to thank our staff. I know our staff worked very hard on this, and just to show my appreciation. Councillor Ferguson?
Thank you, Mr. Marin. I'll, you and enough of your colleagues who worked really hard to make this happen, I'd sort of compliment yourself as well, because it, it's a big benefit to this community. Ride hailing is key coming to Langley, and we don't know how many or how involved they'll be, but it's step one of a number of steps. Certainly, between a community, it's still growing, as far as growing in transit and transportation, and we, we don't have rapid transit yet, but we're moving towards a community that we'll have. This is certainly a big plus for the communities. Well, I wanted to thank you, staff, and all your colleagues for the work you've done.
Thank you, thank you. So, and just one more comment is, is that if there are any concerns that municipalities have regarding ride hailing and the specific management of it in their community, such as curb space, that sort of thing, that can be done through our own traffic bylaws. So this is really just a really a basic business license, and it's for a one-year pilot, and then we'll see how, how this has worked and get, gather more data, and then I would think we'll be coming back for a more permanent bylaw. So with that, I'll call the question on G2. That carries unanimously. And so now we move to the mayor's report. Should have kept the firefighters here for this. Good evening, everyone, and welcome here. There are a few events to tell you about which took pass over the last couple of weeks. On Saturday, February 29th, was the annual firefighters' dinner. Our firefighters' work goes far beyond keeping people safe, as we saw tonight, or assisting at car accidents and medical emergencies, putting out fires, and dealing with incidents that most people would never want to deal with. It's about caring for people, wanting them to live their best lives possible, and doing what you can to support others. You can clearly see that within the Township of Langley Fire Department. Also in attendance at that event, along with me, was Councillor Arneson, Councillor Long, and Councillor Coonst. So it was good to, to be there with our firefighters, and as we saw tonight, they, their work goes beyond their, their shift. Following this event, I was off to the Giving Hearts Gala at the Coast Hotel, where monies were raised to purchase wheelchairs for Langley Memorial Hospital. This annual gala is a partnership between Mr. Balraj Man and Mrs. Manjik Gill and the Langley Memorial Hospital Foundation. And thanks to our community members, I know a lot of, a lot of wheelchairs were, were bought that night. On Tuesday, March 3rd, I had the opportunity to visit Ms. Jackson's grade-two classroom at Dorothy Peacock Elementary, where I read a book to the students as part of the Canadian Agriculture Literacy Month. The B.C. Agriculture and the Classroom Foundation is providing free copies of Reggie's Technological, Technology Adventure to elementary school classes, and it was great to talk to the children about technology and the importance of agriculture. And they had a lot of great questions. And Councillor Davis, you should have been there, you could have talked about the technology on your farm. But we talked about robotic milking, so, I don't know. They've been to, I think, Eagle Acres, where they saw the robotic milking. But, yeah, it was kind of, kind of neat to do that. On Saturday, March 7th, was the eighth annual International Women's Day Lunch, presented by the Rotary Club of Langley Central, where four local women were honored for their outstanding commitment to their community. Congratulations to Kathy Dirksen, Veronica Kallo, Christine McCracken, and Beverly Rodrigo. And it had a great talk by Kirsten Brazier from the Girls Fly 2, where she has encouraged young women and girls to, to enter into aviation, where it's only 6% I think women are in that field and as pilots. So a great, inspiring talk by her. On Saturday, March 7th, was also the Langley Forest School's annual gala fundraiser, the Tumbleweed Ball, which is held at Fort Langley Community Hall. Proceeds from this event will support the Langley Forest School, as it provides inspiring and financially accessible outdoor education for young children. And council also attended, Councillor Arneson attended the Langley Memorial Hospital Auxiliary Luncheon on Monday, March 2nd. Councillor Coonst has been attending Liberation 75 meetings as we prepare for the Blooming Ceremony on April 7th. On Saturday, February 29th, Councillors Coonst, Davis, Whitmarsh, and Woodward attended a tour of the Zenibus Cannabis Facility. Zenibus Cannabis, who came up with that word, that name, but obviously a very good tour. Councillors Whitmarsh and Woodward attended the annual Leadership Prayer Breakfast on Friday, March 6. Upcoming events, the Volunteer Appreciation Banquet is on Thursday, April the 2nd. So with that, thank you very much, and if there's anything that council would like to add. Okay, if not, then we'll move on to, thank you very much for your attention. Move on to other businesses. Is there any other business? Seeing none, motion terminate?
Terminate!
Councillor Davis moves termination, second by Councillor Long. All those in favor, pose carried. Thank you. The regular meeting is now terminated. We'll take a few minutes, we'll transition into the public hearing.